Testing, testing. The boardroom now shows it working. If someone online could let us know whether or not they can hear us now. Okay, thank you, Dr. Jeff. Excellent. Sorry about that. Missed the land acknowledgement and Marnie's wonderful suggestion that we use the reading of the land acknowledgement to think more deeply about our own understanding of the community and the history of it.
Thank you, Brooke.
And I want to follow that up with some thanks to the community. We've got results in for the levy and it passed decisively, which is wonderful because it allows us to fund a lot of programs at the school that we would otherwise have distinct problems funding, including coach stipends, field trip and athletic transportation, sick leave for staff, additional school nurses and counselors that are not paid by the state, everything that goes above and beyond the state basic education, which their model may work for Seattle, but it doesn't work very well for rural school districts. Okay, we have a pretty light agenda this board workshop. I'm going to start with just talking about what a workshop means. At this board workshop, we'll engage in discussion with the community on the topics on our meeting agenda, which you can see on our website or up in the Zoom. And we've got a couple of sheets around here if folks who are present need to see that as well, or it'll be up on the board. We will attempt to integrate online comments with the discussion without taking away from the flow of discussion in person. But if those online could frame their input as whole statements rather than as partial responses to something someone said earlier, it would be very helpful when we actually get to reading them. During these discussions, we usually do respond to comments on this particular topic being discussed, but we want to be careful to speak from a place of knowledge. So if further research is needed, we may ask a community member to bring their question or comment to us via email so that we can research and respond with accurate information. The first comment from a person, whether they're in person or online, must be accompanied by their first and last name and their location. After that, we'll try to recognize names, but if you continue to include them, it would be very helpful. Since we do have people participating for our Zoom webinar, we asked that those attending in person raise their hand and wait to be recognized before speaking. It is inappropriate to use this discussion time to make derogatory personal remarks. To quote Southobe School District Policy Number 1400, however, the board recognizes the distinction between uncivil discourse, which it will not tolerate, and comments about the board, district and/or staff that are negative yet still civil in nature. For those in person, comments which violate the standard will be stopped and the speaker will be asked to rephrase. For those participating online, the leadership team member reading the comment will attempt to edit out derogatory comments but retain the general content of the comment. You can attack an idea, but not a person. Thank you. We'll now move on to our agenda, which is straight up policy review. We're just talking policy. Dr. Moshe is unable to be with us tonight. We have Mr. Pullman here from the district to answer any questions that may come up that we as board members can't or need more information. Andrea is also unavailable tonight and has asked that her absence be excused. I'd like to ask the board members to approve that if, to agree to that, to the excused absence.
Approved, approved.
Thank you. It's due to a family illness. Okay, so now we'll move on to the policy review. Our first policy is number 1113, Board Member Residency Updates. This one and two of the others, basically since we had a light schedule tonight, this meeting, we pulled a couple that just need some more inclusive language, just trying to get through as many of them as possible. And we decided to start with some of the ones that have significant impact, like where we can live. And that's especially important right now because we do have an open board spot for our Clinton representative, the school director from the Clinton district. So you can see up on our board, you can see up on the Zoom, pretty minimal changes, taking out his/her and replacing with their or they. Thank you, Ms. McCarroll, for some of this other language cleanup, the remainder of their term rather than their term that they were elected to. Yeah.
May I just make a minor grammatical recommendation that the final sentence in the large paragraph end in until the end of the term to which they were elected?
Thank you.
Excellent, yes. Any other questions or comments on this policy? If there are issues with the policy itself, this is, this can absolutely be a time to discuss them, but the intent with some of these was just to update the language because the fundamentals of the policy don't need changing. For those online, if you do have a comment, could you please start by just typing in your name and location and then hitting enter in the Q and A chat? Then we'll know that one's coming in and we can wait for it to be typed out. Otherwise, we'll move pretty quickly through these, particularly the simple ones.
I am curious. I have one question regarding this policy, and that would be, for instance, should the director move and resign? Is their eligibility immediately? Is there any kind of term, like a request for notice or some extra statement we could put in that would give the resigning or the moving director a nudge towards giving advanced notice in the event of an anticipated move? Or is that stepping too far?
No, that's an interesting thought. I would wonder whether that's something that should just, whether that's something that needs to be written into policy or if it's just...
Right. Good manners.
Yeah.
I would, I would say that's probably... I would say that's probably part of the practice. Policy is, this is what happens. Strategy and practice becomes, you know, here's how it's done.
Part of my concern there would be if someone doesn't have two weeks' notice, for instance.
Of course.
And we could word it around there, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think the policy is sufficient as it stands. Thank you.
I do appreciate that from the standpoint of just board culture and community culture. It just makes sense to always be thinking about those manners, those civility pieces.
And I think Damian actually gave us a really good example of that, the full meeting ahead of time, beginning of December to 1st of January, giving us that notice. So if there's, I'm not seeing anything coming in online. I think we can move on to the next one if folks are good with that. The next one is actually one that has been updated on WASDA, the Washington State School Directors Association suggestion. It's considered an essential update. I don't know a ton of the details on this, on what it is. I think it's mostly just the legal references that have been updated. Ms. McCarroll, could you chime in on that? Yep. Thank you. I'll repeat it since I've got the mic on right now. But yeah, so a lot of the language is just making it a little more inclusive so that we're not defining students by a single characteristic. So thank you. I noticed that that was being done. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't something I was missing that had been updated. Checked Zoom. Oh, we've got something up here in the Q and A here. There's a question here for one of our future policies, which I'll read when we get to that policy. Thank you for putting it in early so that we can address it immediately when the policy comes up. Any other questions or comments on this special education related services for eligible students?
This looks like a really thorough update.
Anything from our student reps?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to the next one. And the next one is the enrollment and retention update. This is our promotion and retention update. This is another one where we're just looking at, where the intent was just to look at the language and it was just adding in that guardians, just to make it a little more inclusive for a student who might be living with an aunt or an uncle or a non-related adult or whatever their situation is, just to make it so they feel included.
I do see a his and her at the top paragraph. So that's just that fine-tooth comb.
Excellent. Yes, thank you. Okay, I think that's, yeah, this is pretty simple. Thank you for catching that. Okay. Our next one is enrollment update. And again, that, this is just one of those where we're just really looking at... I know, this is one of the, I think this caught both, actually. That this was what I wanted to have an update for inclusive language and you caught some essential updates on. So thank you. So we're looking in here and it's got a specific reference to the Washington State law and what offenses can be considered during enrollment. And... Yeah, getting permanent records and... What they can or can't do, updating the language around students experiencing homelessness, updating parents and guardians. Students with a parent in the military rather than military children.
Parent and guardian, you may want to do that in the first paragraph also.
Yes, yes, that's another one. Yep. Good catch, Dan. Thank you. Got a parent guardian in the first paragraph as well. Okay. Any thoughts or comments on this one?
No, thank you.
It's pretty straightforward as well. Okay, we'll move on to the Freedom of Expression Essential Update, Policy Number 3220. This is one of those essential updates from WASDA. And there are significant changes to the language in regards to referencing specific law, a specific law in here. I thought I heard something over there, but someone interested in commenting.
I wonder about just defining WASDA for those who might be new to this terminology. It's the Washington State School Directors Association, and they provide a lot of resources, including guidance on policy updates. And they have a great team of legal advisors and other experts that can help guide public schools in making policy updates.
Thank you. Yeah, it's absolutely. And it's wonderful that they have this collection that, because they can pay people to look at what's happening in the legislature and then make these updates. And then we, districts don't have to pay for legal fees to do so.
Are all of these WASDA changes?
I believe that these, I believe that these are all WASDA updates.
Unless we're cleaning up language and all the things we always do.
I think that the, that there were previously some bullet points that had most of those. I'm going to check the current policy real quick on my computer, just to make sure that we're looking at.
It's explained. So when I do the comparison, I take the, what we originally have currently and I take what WASDA's recommended and I do the review. So in red is the differences between the WASDA. When you see it's yellow highlighted, that means things that I've added on top of that.
Oh, yeah, you're, thank you. Yes. The entire bullet point list is new. I thought I remembered seeing it previously, but that was in a different policy.
Well, it definitely reads a lot more cleanly now, I think. I'm interested to hear what our student reps have to say about this one. It does definitely affect them in a big way.
I think this is a super important policy, just freedom of speech in general, and also referring, instead of just like blatantly saying, you know, discrimination on sex and religion, it just refers back to discrimination policy, which has like definitely more wide and not just those certain topics or identities.
I would like to see WASDA do more to protect students' freedom of speech, but I do think this is a step in the right direction. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay, we've got a question from the community online, Margaret King-Clinton, in regards to the freedom of expression. Are banners purchased by the ASB? And if the banners have political related content, is that in violation of RCW 28A 600027, which I believe is the one referenced here? Oh, it is not the one referenced. It's part of the one referenced there. I am not a legal expert, so I can't respond to that with any... Actual, any direct knowledge of that. I do know that we have had legal review the actions of the district. Mr. Pullman, do you have anything to note on that? Just turn it off.
No, I'd have to research the RCW that is specifically being asked about. I don't have that one off the top of my head.
The banners were purchased with donated funds. I know that. So it was not... The money went through the ASB accounts, but it was purchased by, with donated funds.
As far as we know, they're not, we're not violating any policies and the content is not defined as political in the sense of the policies. So because of that, we're not violating any...
Exactly. Thank you, Sol.
And the district did have a legal review of this when the first banner went out.
And thank you, Mr. Pullman. If that doesn't answer your question, Margaret, you can certainly email it in and that will give us time to actually refer point by point to the RCW that you've referenced rather than giving an off-the-cuff response.
I'd also like to mention that I think the banners all say not affiliated with any political groups. So right there, separating any political affiliations.
Yes, that was certainly the intent of that language. Yes, thank you for the reminder. Any other thoughts on this one? I agree with both the student reps that this is an important thing, especially when we're working on raising up student voice, as we're trying to do and as you two are demonstrating so ably. That it's really important to protect freedom of speech within that.
And the Student Representative Network for the state is working on putting together a document to defend the rights of students and student reps across the state, which will be sent to this district at some point within the next couple of months and all the districts in the state. And hopefully that will have language that will do more to protect student rights and their freedoms of expression and speech.
Thank you. And I would like to note here in public that you are on the board of that, correct?
I'm, I'm, I'm not. Both Audrey and I are members of the state, the state Student Representative Network, and I'm part of the leadership team for the national...
The national, yes.
Student, National Student Board Member Association.
Thank you for the correction there. Yes. But that's awesome that you're taking your voices beyond the district also. So thank you.
And congratulations on taking on that role. Thank you for doing that on behalf of students.
Okay, I'm going to check.
I, I see one comment from the community that is pending. Somebody said she has a question. So maybe we can just wait a moment before moving to our next topic?
Absolutely. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And just for formality's sake, Gwendy, don't forget to give us your, your place of, your location.
Since you've been so generous with your time and joining us in so many of these, we have it memorized, but it's still good.
It's true.
Thank you, Anne, for the reminder. Yes. I was just looking through this list of, this bullet pointed list again, and noting how many of those things are so close to the dress code, because those are directly related.
May I answer this question, Brooke?
Let's take a look at the question. I'm sure that you are able to. So Gwendy Hastings-Freeland, looking back at the response to the banners, do you think it caused a political response that affected our district and community? I would say that I think that this is getting off topic from the policy at hand, actually. So I would like to step away from that question because unless other board members disagree.
I would like to hear a response and offer a response of my own, because I do feel that when our question about freedom of speech for students comes up, the community is going to have questions of this nature and it is tied to what this policy protects. So my personal perspective is that I would like to hear what you have to share and I'd like to share something as well.
Okay, let's do it.
So as the head of the committee that manages the banners at the high school, every single decision that we make regarding the banners, it takes the, that, this perspective into mind that it will be construed as political in certain situations and that that will always be an element of any kind of public statement of that nature. And so that's always being considered, given that because ASB makes the decisions regarding banners and because it goes through students, it's, it's very much an issue of the student's freedom to put up what they want at their school and through their ASB. And it is separate from politics. And it's actually much more, much more of an issue of following the policies that we have at a district level regarding equity, regarding the, the mission and vision than it is an issue of politics or party affiliations or anything like that. And because of that, we have made our decision to continue to support the banners that we have.
Eloquently said. Thank you.
Thank you, Sol. And I would just add that a statement like Black Lives Matter can be construed by some as political. Racism can be construed by some as political. Our institutions are racist. Our system, our political system is racist. And therefore, the ability to have conversations about matters like this is a matter of public and civic responsibility. And if a banner sparks some public, some public discussion, I would say it is serving a purpose to move us towards action on this vital matter. Thank you.
And the, to directly answer the question, the, has it, how has it affected our district and community? What I've seen from the student body's perspective is that generally the effect of the banners has had a positive impact on the students and their feelings about what it means to be a student of the Southobe School District. I was initially skeptical about the use of banners because of some concern regarding the political nature of them. But what I've seen, and I can only speak for myself in this regard, is that the, the impact and the response has been positive from the perspective of the student body.
Okay. Thank you all for weighing in on that. Let's move along to the next item, which is Policy 3246, Restraint Isolation and Other Uses of Reasonable Force Essential Update. This is another one of those WASDA, Washington State School Directors Association updates that has gone through their legal team and is updated, I believe, for updates to the Washington State Legal Code. We do have a question from the community on here. I'm going to give folks here in the room a chance to read over it again, just to refamiliarize themselves and then to comment if they'd like. And then we'll go to the community comment from Zoom. Anything from those here in the room? I'll go to Margaret King-Clinton. I tried to put those together, sorry, in regards to the uses of reasonable force. Has isolation been used due to COVID? And if so, is that reasonable when we know kids are unlikely to have a serious risk or even a vector for transmission? I would note that I, I disagree. I, I disagree and I believe that the science disagrees on unlikely to have a serious risk or even a vector of transmission. There's, have certainly been numerous cases of child to child transmission in the state and in the country and the world. I don't know about in this community. I can't speak to that. Mr. Pullman, do you have any knowledge of whether isolation has been used in regards to COVID? I wouldn't expect so.
I would suggest we have Dr. Fankhauser, who's online, weigh in as a special ed director because he's the person that's closest to this issue.
Excellent. That's a wonderful suggestion. Dr. Fankhauser, if you could take the time to type up an answer, I would, will happily read it. And if it is something where we need more investigation to check on that, we can certainly do that and ask Margaret King to send an email in and to get a response back.
I'm also curious whether the physical distancing of three and six feet between students and or staff, according to the legal definition of physical distancing in the schools, is something that is tied into this question? Perhaps I'm misconstruing the question. I wouldn't consider that synonymous with isolation, but I'm wondering if that's part of what's being asked.
Yeah, I definitely wouldn't consider that isolation or restraint. That, that's just requiring, requiring space between individuals. So, yeah. I don't know if Dr. Fankhauser is active or typing, so we'll just give him a little bit more time to respond to that. Yes, we will bring you in, Dr. Fankhauser. Absolutely.
Thanking the audience for our patience. We're just bringing in Dr. Fankhauser now.
Good evening, everybody. I don't know if you can see me.
Yes, we can.
This policy has to do with the isolation and restraint used in classrooms. And it only has to do with imminent harm to other students or staff. And so what triggers this policy is some kind of a physical altercation or physical outburst in a classroom that requires the protection of another student or staff member. When we're talking about COVID as far as isolation, that's a completely different conversation. We do have nurses' rooms. So we have basically brooms set up if we have a suspected case where we then have the nurses do the relevant testing with parent permission in order to determine whether the student needs to go home or not if they've exhibited symptoms. But this policy having to do with isolation restraint came about in 2016 as the course of any time you remove a student from a classroom or put them in a isolated space due to behavior. And it's a procedure and policy that basically outlines the, basically removes the ability of school districts to do that again, unless there's imminent likelihood of serious harm.
Thank you, Dr. Fankhauser. That, that's what I assume, but I, it's wonderful to have your expertise and actual sure knowledge of what this means and how that relates. Thank you very much.
Just to wrap up, we do report annually how many times we use either isolation or restraint and that is reported to the state. And so if anybody has any questions about that, I'm happy to explain more, but I will step back away.
Thank you again. Any other questions on this policy? Okay, seeing no other questions. We'll move on from there and that's our last policy. So with that in mind, just again, a thank you to the community for approving the levy and a reminder that we do have that open board seat for someone in the Clinton community. If you are in Clinton, please check in with us to make sure that it is within the Clinton district boundaries because that it's based on a road outline and it's not exactly the zip code, I believe. But if you do, are interested in joining the board and helping guide Southwoodby School District, please send an email into the district, either to Dr. Moshe, I believe. Or to Christie.
They could just send it to info, I N F O, at sw.wednet.edu. The application as well as information is, and the boundary lines are on the website under the School Board tab.
Thank you. That's so much easier than trying to send it to an individual person. And if you have any questions about the open director spot, again, info at sw.wednet.edu.
May I ask for an update, whether there have been applications thus far?
I have not received any.
Gotcha. And, and I recall that there was at least an expression of curiosity during our last public meeting. And so I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to reach directly out to those who have expressed interest or if it's more of a just a public entreaty that they, that they be in touch if they're still interested.
I believe that, I believe that we've responded to anyone who's expressed interest.
Okay, I just want to be sure that we get several qualified candidates. So I'd like to repeat the, the request to please consider joining in service to our students and district. Thank you.
And, you know, please reach out to us as well if you have questions about how it works or not only how to apply, but like what it feels like to be a board member, how much time it takes. You know, what the non-negotiables are and what the, what the work is. Because, you know, any of us can give our own experience around that. So if it feels, feels like something you're interested in, but it feels kind of big, talk to one of us.
Thank you both. And with that, I will, oh, we have a comment here. Yep, it's green.
How do I know if it's working?
You're good. Oh, no, you just turned it off.
I have to introduce myself. I'm Rufus Rose. I live at six five two nine Four Sisters Road off Maxwellton Road. And I had a question about policies, not the ones you're talking about tonight. Is that okay to ask about something that's not on tonight's agenda?
Unfortunately, we can't do that at a board workshop. Part of the rules for this is it has to be something on the agenda and that's, that's something about the workshop format. If it's something that I can talk to you about afterwards, I'm happy to do that one-on-one.
It was really a question about, is there such a policy for something that I want? I didn't know what your format was. But I, I'd like to ask a question if I may.
We actually don't have the opportunity at, at the workshops to talk about anything off the board, off the agenda. If we do that, the board can actually get in trouble.
With who?
With the state, with OSBI.
Brooke, can I mention something? I want to just share my screen for anybody who is curious about policy. The board docs, which is on the website, is where our agendas are. And if you just go up to moving the picture of us, you can see, but to the top right corner of bar docs, there's a little magnifying glass. There, do you see it to the right-hand side? When you click that, it gives you the search engine and you can put in anything you want. And you can find it in meetings, policies, minutes, and attachments. And just an FYI for everybody, I've scanned minutes all the way back to 1957. So you can find a lot of stuff in there.
May I try a different tack?
Certainly, or, or, I can also talk to you after we adjourn.
You have a formal start and finish of a school board meeting. And if you were to conclude your school board meeting, would it be illegal or improper for, for all of us to sit here for a minute or two and talk, not as part of your school board meeting?
Yeah, if we're talking about school matters, the three of us forming a quorum of the board cannot be involved in the same discussion outside of a public meeting because that's the Open Public Meetings Act. Because everything, any discussion that involves the, a quorum of the board has to be in public. And by in public, that includes Zoom, that includes in-person. Zoom, in fact, is the requirement right now. In-person is optional.
I thought the Open Public Meetings Act restrictions only applied to potential decisions for matters that were before the board. What I'm talking about has nothing to do with what's before the board at all.
If we're talking about matters involving the school district that could possibly come up in a discussion or something like that, it is, it has to be in an open public meeting, which is why we're talking, you and I were talking beforehand and I was talking about why our retreats are livestreamed, because that's where we're discussing matters involving the, the district. And so they have to be public. And so having them livestreamed makes them public. So I'll happily talk to you about your question following the meeting. Two of us could. Anne and Marnie couldn't. I could step away, whatever that is, as long as it's not a quorum discussing it.
That include the students? My understanding is they do not have votes and therefore their presence would not be a violation.
Correct. It is voting members only. Yeah, okay. Does, does that answer your questions? Your, your overarching question.
I hear your answer. I'm not sure I agree with it, but there's nothing I can do about that.
And this is actually outside of our control also. It is between policies and our state law about these items. So I'm going to adjourn the meeting and then if you'd like to talk about this offline with an appropriate number of us, we're happy to do that. We can do that outside the meeting. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.